Dave, we're going to do a one right before you and then you'll be a couple of minutes. Okay, I'd like to call this public hearing to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Present.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McCandrew?
Present.
Mr. Smurl?
Here.
The purpose of said public hearing is to hear testimony and discuss the following: Resolution number 183, 2025, approving the intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license, R15007, currently owned by The Grill at the Highlands LLC and located at 1 Highlands Boulevard, Suite 105, Archbald, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania 18403, to North Washington Avenue Properties, LLC, doing business as Alter Bar, located at 116 North Washington Avenue, Suite 100, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania 18503, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
Is there anyone here that'd like to speak on this? There's no one here, and there is no one on the sign-in sheet, so. Good. No further business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, this public hearing is adjourned. Thank you. Now we will move on to the parking authority. Dave, Travis Hanny, you begin.
Yeah, I think I'll turn it over to Jake to make some introductions and start with the operational update.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. First off, I just want to introduce Andrew Gao. He's from the Car Park. He's their operations manager. He'll be here for any operations questions we may have as we go through this presentation. Jumping right into commercial leases, currently two spaces are vacant, the former Coliseum space. That is listed a few bites, hoping to get an interested party in here in the next little while. Recently, the storage unit over at the Casey Garage opened up. We'll work with our local Realtor to get that listed as well. Looking throughout the rest of the year, three of our tenants are coming up for a lease, Zulu Investments at the end of May. No options right now, but we'll start talking with them to extend. Bartari at the Casey Garage, they're up through, up in the middle of August, and they do have a three-year option. We'll start those conversations shortly as well. And then at the end of the year, Comics on the Green at the Linden Garage is up. Currently on that lease, no options, so we'll see if there's interest to keep them there as they've been there for quite some time. Next, we'll go over some capital projects that we are working on, the Mifflin Street repaving. You know, a big thank you to the cities. They're going to loop that repaving job into their bigger projects that are currently out for bid. Excuse me. Next, we have the Medallion Sewer Issue. There's an issue with a pipe that needs to be replaced at the Medallion Garage going from the parking office to the Coliseum Space. We have been in talk with some engineering firms to oversee that project for us, hoping to get that completed by summer of this year. We will also look for some HVAC updates at Catch 21 and possibly Pizza by Papa's, depending on how numbers come in, so that'd be another project summer of '25. This spring, we're going to work to get the power washing completed of, hopefully, all the garages, but more realistically, two of the garages will get done. I believe Linden and Casey are the two top ones, Andrew.
How often does the power washing occur?
I've been here 18 months, and we haven't done it since. Ideally, it's every two years. Dave, do you know the last time?
I think the last time was three years ago. We've been a bit budget constrained, and so we've been putting it off, but we're at the time now. We really need to do it because then it'll start to impact us negatively. We really want to get the salt off the garages, and so it's pretty critical we start that this year. But we have delayed it just because of financial reasons, but now we're ready to do it.
Okay, thank you.
We do, on a quarterly basis, we do power sweeps, so that has been keeping the garages in good shape, but definitely time. Over at the Casey Garage, there is a fire pump that needs to be replaced. We're working with our fire vendor to get those quotes in and to prep for that work. There's some equipment, parking equipment, that needs to be upgraded at the mall, the mall garage, that we're in discussions about, the Car Parks kind of going through all scenarios and seeing what the best fit would be. And then lastly, the Linden Street elevator remains open, an open item that we are looking to get completed, and we've applied through a grant, and we're waiting to hear back on that, and hopefully we can get that completed in '25.
Yeah, all of these are, none of these are critical. The HVAC systems need to be done, of course. The sewer upgrade needs to be done. We do have some money to do the sewer upgrade. We'll talk about this a little bit later, but we have been working with our bondholder on a bond refinance, and part of those discussions will include capital needs assessment so that we are able to finance these improvements going forward. Again, we'll talk about the historical trends and how we used our reserves over the past few years with the pandemic. Now it's time to really restructure the financing and make sure that we're taking care of these things in a more timely way, and we'll be working on that over 2025. In addition to applying for grants and other sources that might be available at the different levels of government, we applied for the LSA grant for the elevator, Jake?
Correct.
So hopefully we'll hear on that soon and be able to get that done.
Can I give that immobilization?
Sure. Immobilization, I think if you, most of you were here over the past two years, we've, or maybe longer, we've been pursuing an alternative adjudication process for delinquent tickets, which required the approval of counsel. And although we have the authority to immobilize a vehicle, if it doesn't, if it meets the requirements for immobilization, we haven't really been able to access the information in order to be able to act on that. So for example, if someone has three outstanding unpaid tickets, that would allow us to immobilize that vehicle if they get a fourth ticket. Well, we have not been able to access that data to be able to tell whether or not that person is on a payment plan, for example, or that they paid those tickets. So the good news is, we have been, we've upgraded our technology. The magistrate's office has some upgraded technology, so now we're able to access that data. Over the time that we've been talking about, now there were a lot of concerns about that process, and we totally understand. So the good news is, the magistrate's office has been really been great to deal with. We now will be able to implement a process with no change, no approval by this body. We do have the authority to immobilize vehicles if they meet certain requirements, and now we'll be able to start that process. So we're right now developing an operating procedure to put that in place. We've hired a local public relations firm so that we can get out to the public and let them know this is coming and do some educational work so that they know that this is something that's, you know, coming later this summer, and we'll help them understand. We'll reach out to all those folks who are on the list and make sure that they know that they have some outstanding tickets so that they can clean those up so this doesn't happen, and if it does happen, what to do and how to, how to undo that. So we don't want to rush this. This is something that we, it's important for us to do because it's a deterrent. We're not in the business of just issuing tickets and immobilize folks' vehicles. We just want folks to be able to pay for the parking that they use, and because we haven't had a good system in place, it really hasn't been working well, and we haven't been able to collect the revenue that we've, that folks owe. So we think this is ultimately going to be a good thing down the road. Folks will just, you know, pay for their parking, and folks won't even be immobilized. I don't think you're going to see many of these on the street. But there will be an education process. There will be a time that we'll, we have to roll this out, and again, we want to get in front of the public, let them know this is coming, how to find out if they have outstanding tickets. We're going to reach out to them. We'll be sending them a letter and hopefully put this in place at some point later this summer.
So Dave, what's the plan? Are we still talking about putting something over the windshield?
The best technology out there, it's called a barnacle, and so yes, it will be not a boot attached to the vehicle's tire, but it's a cover that attaches to the windshield. And again, we're going to, we'll put out an educational video to show folks in case this happens, and what that individual will do, if it does happen, is they'll have to pay their bill, and then they'll be given a code, and they'll enter the code, take it off, and then drop it off at a drop location. It'll be listed right on, right on there. So it's really a lot more user-friendly than a boot, but, and it's worth.
Are there any concerns about people actually returning those things?
Well, if they don't return it, then we'll just bill their credit card for the cost of it. So that's really what the penalty would be. If they don't drop it off, then we'll have their credit card because they would have had to pay their bill, and if they don't drop it off, we'll charge their credit card.
I'm sure you'll probably make sure there'll be language on
Of course.
that would indicate failure to return would result in.
Of course, and that's why we're not going to rush this. We want to make sure that if this does happen to folks, that they know exactly what they need to do, but most importantly, how not to have this happen to you. There's three, really, three ways, and if you have three outstanding, three or more outstanding tickets that are unpaid, one outstanding ticket in a handicapped area, or your vehicle is unregistered, those are really the only three ways. Now, if you're on a payment plan with the magistrate's office, and you had outstanding tickets, and you're making your payments, that's fine, and you'll remain okay. So that's really what, how that will work.
And you'll have access to all that data?
Right.
No?
That's right. Yep, do the updated technology. It's really, yeah, the reason we haven't moved so far is because we didn't want to immobilize a vehicle and have it not be, have that person be not.
But the parking authority would be mounting these things, right, not the Scranton Police?
That's correct. It would be Car Park, not the Parking Authority, but Car Park, yes.
So Andrew, everybody's going to love him.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Okay.
We honestly think that the first, you know, it's going to take a little while. People will, some folks, this will happen too, but once it actually, folks know that this is a possibility, folks will not want it to happen, and they'll just pay for their parking, or, and remember, when we talked about the app, we want folks to use the app. It's really easy. If you're in the hairdressers or if you're in a long line to pay your taxes, and you paid the meter and you're going to go over, if you have the app, you can just add another dollar and buy yourself a little more time without having to run out to the meter. So it's pretty user-friendly, and we want to be able to get the public to use this, use this more, so this doesn't happen to them. Not being able to do this, there's just a lot of abuse by folks who know they can game the system because they're really not, it's not going to happen to them. So this is really a deterrent. It's not something that we expect to use very often, but it probably will happen in the early stages, and I think folks will get used to it and know what they need to do in order for it not to happen, and I think it'll be better for everybody.
Are you still planning to go with eight until five every weekday?
For.
Parking, on the streets?
Oh, for hours of enforcement. We haven't made that decision yet. I mean, that's something that we'll look at. I'll talk a little bit later about the bond restructure, and so those are things that we're looking at and we'll look at, and the financial impact of doing that, that we think that's a good thing, but we're working through the impacts of that and the economics of it, so, but not, the decision's not been made final yet, but that's actually a good option for us.
So I do remember having this barnacle discussion before.
Yep.
And I don't believe that anybody was in favor of it.
I'm sorry?
Concerns were, I don't think everybody was on board with it during them initial discussions. The cost of them, what did they cost again? Are they like $1,100 or $1,800? I'm trying to remember.
I don't, you mean what the barnacle cost to buy?
No, the barnacle itself, yeah. How much does it cost?
Yeah, do you know that, Jake?
$3,000 each.
$3,000 each.
Yeah.
So it's a lot of money.
Yeah.
And now my understanding is you have a better relationship with the magistrates, right? With data collection or sharing data?
Well, it was a number of reasons. It was just upgraded technology. The information was available. We just couldn't directly access that data, so.
So but now, okay, since you've been able to.
So we actually have that data ourselves now as well, so it's really.
Well, that's great.
Data's available.
So now, I mean, have you taken a look with regards to the multiple ticket? The people have multiple tickets. Is there a lot of them? Is there a real lot of them that we have to be worried about?
I think there's a few who have many, many, many tickets, which is kind of the abusers. And to be honest, I don't know the extent of that list and how many of those are. I think, actually, we just asked our on-street coordinator to give us a total because we're going to be sending a letter to these folks, and so we want to know the number of folks we'll be sending letters to. But it's probably, I'm only guessing. I don't know. It's not thousands. Maybe 100 people.
In terms of immobilization and collection, so you said there was technology updates.
Did you, did your company get the technology updates? The magistrate's got it or both?
Well, I think both. I mean, I'm not familiar with the details, but I know when we brought Car Park on, I think their systems were just much more upgraded than what we had with ABM, so that made a big difference all by itself.
Okay, and communication is better with the magistrate's?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Dave, when exactly was the, like, turnover from ABM to Car Park, the turning of that?
Car Park started April 1 of last year.
So about a year.
Those are the official rates.
Yep.
So if someone is a repeat offender and has many multiple parking tickets and say they can't afford to pay it all in full right away, want to get back their vehicle, are you guys still willing to work with the person on payment plans or?
Well, that's really between that court system and that individual. And so if there's outstanding tickets and they work with the court system and they make a plan, that's really between them and the court system, and as long as they stay on that plan, then this is, they won't be on that list. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there a plan with that list that you have of about 100 people, let's say, worst offenders? Is the game plan to fire off a letter to them and indicate, if your car is parked in the city, expect that there's going to be a, what are they called?
Barnacled, yeah. I don't know that we would word it that way, but I think we just want to make folks aware because we haven't been able, we haven't done this, right? So if folks have outstanding tickets, we want to let them know that, and there'll be a grace period, so we want to let folks know. We want to send a letter, and we sign, so here's the date we're starting, here's, you know, 30, 45 days from now, so to be aware. If you need more information, call. So, you know, we've.
You're going to give them an opportunity to try to.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We're not doing this to, you know, penalize anybody, but we, you know, this is a system now, I think, is going to be a deterrent, and it's important for any parking system to be able to operate successfully. So, yeah, we want to give folks every opportunity to be able to pay the outstanding bill if they have one and let them know. And the other thing I want to mention is that, you know, unregistered vehicles, I mean, that's another reason. And so if someone gets a ticket and we send them a letter, and that letter comes back, no address found, that would, because the information comes from the DMV, that would suggest that the, that person doesn't have a car that's registered. And so I think it's important for the public to know. That may seem trivial to some folks, maybe. Oh, I moved and I didn't, you know, update my license or my registration, but, you know, that's going to be important. And so we just really want folks to know that an unregistered vehicle is not legal and that that could be a reason to have your car immobilized, and we don't want that to happen, obviously. So we want folks to know that this is something that they should pay attention to, and we'll give them enough time, of course.
So let me ask you this, then. If somebody is parked there and they have time left on there, they actually paid, but you find out that they're, they don't have registration, does the parking authority have the right to go after that, or would that be a police issue?
No, I think, you know, it's license plate technology, so, and you have to correct me here, but if the officer is making their rounds, and they come across a license plate that has, that's on that list, that shows up as having three or more outstanding unpaid tickets, that would alert the officer that that ticket, that car can be immobilized. They will call the on-street manager, and the on-street manager will use discretion if there's reason to, right? If somebody is just a few days beyond the third ticket, I said, look, let's make sure they know, right? If their car's not registered, you need to tell them, and then the next, then it's in the record. So we want to be fair. We want to be punitive, but the answer to your question is yes, that vehicle would be able to be mobilized, even if they're parked in a, that day, a legal spot that's paid.
So how do you know if it's unregistered? Just, you don't have a reader, per se. You just, just based on no address found and it comes back to you?
Correct.
So, okay.
Correct.
You do have a reader, though. You said it was license plate.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, that's right. You have a license plate reader. You have one, then?
That's correct. Sure. That's how the system works. It's license plate reader tied to the DMV. That's where we get the addresses from, the DMV. So I just wanted to give you that update. I think the good news is, we don't need any approval. We're able to more efficiently operate the system. This will allow us to more operate their system. It'll be a deterrent to abuse, and I think it'll be good for all, eventually. Great. Thank you.
All right, moving on. I know we're going to look at year-end performance. I apologize, I wasn't here in January. I don't think anyone wanted to see me that week, but here we're looking at 24 numbers, and it ended on a high note. Our revenues came in, you know, 21,000 better than budget. Expenses came better than budget by 43,000, and then NOI was 64,000 better. Going to the next slide, really on the operating expenses, a big reason was our total payroll. I know Car Park wasn't fully staffed at some points of the year, and that's where we see the savings there. When you look at total other expenses, ABM, they put us in a bad spot in the first quarter with paying bills from as far back as '21. Car Park was able to manage the rest of the year on a, just manage it to the best of their abilities to keep that number as low as possible, that loss there. And then if.
Yeah, I just want to point out on this slide, even though we were better than budget in 2024, notice our budget was approved as a deficit budget because we knew that we weren't going to be able to have enough money to pay debt service. So if you look at the far right column, the net operating income line, the budget 2024 was $1,293. Our debt service payment was $1,555. So we approved the budget knowing that we weren't going to have enough money to make our debt payments just because of the pandemic and that we made some rate change. I'll talk about this a little bit more later. But again, this shows the need to restructure and refinance the debt, which we've been working with our bondholders on. So even though we had a good year, and we met budget or were better than budget, it still does not meet our current debt obligations, which sort of leads us, or will lead us, to the need for ultimately restructuring that debt.
Does anyone have any questions on the 24 numbers? We only have numbers through January. First month, as you see, you know, revenue better than budget, it's a good thing. Expenses worse than budget, and that played into payroll. I'll just jump to the next slide so we could see. Payroll was over, and that was due to three pay periods, how the Car Park's system was worked, and that wasn't factored in when this budget was created. So that will balance itself out. But revenue is a strong month. Normally, January is a down month for us, so it was great to see us beat budget.
Yeah, and again, on the '25 budget, you'll notice if you compare it to '24, the net operating income is about the same. So we passed the budget, again, lower than what our debt obligations were planned to be in 2025. Again, we were able to make our January payment from reserves. We've exhausted those now, so it's time to work. And Alliance Bernstein's recognized that. They have been waiting for interest rates to come down. That did not happen, so they've actually just recently hired a financial structuring consultant to work with us on the debt refunding, and they want that to happen in 2025. So 2024 and 2025 were years that we didn't, we didn't meet our obligations, but we've made the payments from reserves, but now we're at a point where we need to do something, and even though interest rates didn't go down like our bondholder wanted them, or hoped them they would, they're ready to read, they're ready to do this in 2025.
So you have a bond or two that is callable at this time?
No. No, we're not in default. We made our January payment. The next payment is due in July, so the plan is to restructure the bonds and hopefully do a closing in June.
Okay.
This, I like to show this slide because it shows the trends of the parking performance. 2019 was pre-pandemic. You'll see on the net operating income line, the gross revenue line, $4,005,000 in revenue. Obviously, we were in good shape at that point. We had reserves. Things were going well. 2020 pandemic, you can see the gross revenue line, $3,003,000, $4,000,000. 2022, $4,003,000. That takes into account a rate increase for 2020. We increased the rates at the end of 2019 for the 2020 year, so even with the rate increase, our revenues were really way off 2019 numbers. So 2022 comes around, we've had some experience with the pandemic. We've had some experience with the customers and the ratepayers. We were scheduled to make rate increases in 2022. We saw those rate increases as a negative that could hurt downtown, hurt the Parkers. We hired a consultant to help us do projections. We were working with our bondholders. We came in front of this body, and we recommended that we would lower rates for the 2023 year. We lowered the transient rates from $4 to $1. The expectation for that would be more folks who are on-street would move into the garage at $1 an hour. That would free up spots on the street. That would attract more business to the on-street. That would generate more revenue, and that would be a good thing for the system long term. That was the plan. I think it worked out pretty well, and if you'll notice, in 2023 and 2024, our revenue in 2022 was $4,385,000. It went to $4,575,000. We were off a little bit in 2024, $4,496,000. What we saw there is, even though we lowered the rates in 2022, we saw revenues stay about the same, even though we were collecting $1 an hour versus $4 an hour, right? So that's a really good thing. The not-so-good thing is that didn't get better for 2024, and we don't think it's going to get better for 2025 and beyond. And I think the reason for that is, there's just not enough traffic and new Parkers coming downtown to be able to support the difference between $4 and $1. That really, really is what it comes down to. So our bondholders recognize this. We looked at some projections. Again, we brought on a consultant to project out for the next 20 years, and we're working with our bondholders now on what a restructure of these bonds will look like. And our goals for that are aligned with our bondholder, and I think that they would be aligned with the administration and council here, is to ensure long-term stability of the system. We know how the system's going to operate now. We have some good history. You know, the revenues aren't at $1 an hour. It's not as great as we thought it would be, but that's the information we have, and that's what we're going to use as the basis for restructuring the bond. for restructuring the bonds. Maintain affordable rate structure. There will be a rate increase in 2026, that was planned. When we lowered the rates in 2022, we agreed to keep them flat for three years, that ends 2025. So in 2026, the rates will go up about 25 cents an hour in the garages. And then, of course, maintain the system, be able to afford preventative maintenance in our capital needs. So we will spend the next few months, we will work with our Alliance Bernstein, we will work with the administration, because any, any changes to the concession agreement, which there will be with the bond restructure, will have to be approved by this body. So we'll be working over the next few months on, with the bondholder, with the city, with this body, the Board of Directors of CDP, which the city has representation on that board, we'll work through those, that structuring and ultimately there'll be, something will come in front of this body in a few months with some recommendations for a restructure. So I wanted to give you that update, wanted to let you know that was coming and this was really driven by the bondholders. I think they were hoping rates would come down, they were waiting for the right time. We all knew this would happen. And they recognize in this that they will not likely, we will not likely to be able to pay off all the, restructure all the bonds. The bondholder recognizes that they're gonna have to take what I call in the industry a haircut. They're gonna, they're not gonna be able to receive all of the, all of the payments that they have expected to make. So that's part of the discussion that we'll have with them, that's part of the discussion we'll have when we look at making changes to the concession agreement and we'll have those conversations together as we move forward over the next few months.
The only thing I noticed on the last slide is the Pango participation's way up.
Yes.
Like extremely...
Great news. We want people to use the automated system, use the app, it's easy to use. You can add, you can add from a remote location, you can buy parking before you even come into downtown, buy it ahead of time, right? And so I think we encourage people to use that.
Dave, has there been any discussion about extending hours?
That's something that we're gonna need to think about. I mean, one of the things we recognized when we hired Walker consultants and we lowered the rates back in 2022 was the opportunity to look at extending rates during the week beyond 5 o'clock. And when we looked at that, the, there wasn't support to do that at the time, even though we thought it was a good idea, the consultant thought it was a good idea.
I'm not recommending it, I'm just asking if that's...
The answer is yes, we're, yes, we're looking at that and we're looking at that strongly.
My only concern there had to do with the businesses downtown, the restaurants and...
One of the things that I think were, the restaurants are experiencing and we've gotten some feedback from folks is, there has been growth in downtown from residential. And when you have parking enforcement till 5, a lot of folks who work outside of downtown park their car on the street. They leave in the morning, they go out of downtown, they come back, they park on the street, they don't have to buy a pass. If you tried to go to a restaurant on some of the streets where there's activity, you often can't get a spot and those spots are often taken up by people who are, who are permanent residents of downtown, who didn't buy a parking pass and they park on the street. To me, that hurts the restaurants and extending those hours a little bit...
That's valid.
Would encourage folks to go into a garage and then leave those parking spots open for folks who want to go downtown, they'll go to dinner. So that's one example. And we'll be looking at some other things and we'll be, we'll be working with the administration as, over the next couple of months, but that's something that we strongly support. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.